Yep, you might be.
We're gonna have emotional going executive session. May I get a second? We're gonna have emotional. Unless I get up my journal.
Ready, sir?
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Here.
Stothard?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Festerson?
Here.
Gurnett?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, help this council to listen attentively, attentively, act appropriately, and do what is necessary to continue to move our city forward. Amen.
Amen.
City Clerk's certified publication on daily record on April 19th. Notice for Superior Council and regular City Council meeting April 20/30/2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance and final reading planning board attachments. We'll take items five, six, and seven as one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located east of 99th Street and south of Reddick Avenue from limited industrial district to R7 medium density fall family residential district. A planning board, planning department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to approve a planned unit overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And seven is an ordinance to approve a development agreement. And we have a request for a two-week layover till March 7th and continue the public hearing. Or till May 7th, I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number eight is ordinance to rezone property located at 510 South 55th Street from R3 to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 15, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Ridgewood to allow automotive repair services located southeast of 147th Street and West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 13 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers nine through 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Brian Doyle, Paul and Camp Doyle in Jobin 11440 West Center Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 14, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Greyhawk to allow convenient storage and warehousing and distribution located southeast of 147th and Spencer Streets. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Bob Daly with McGrath North, 1601 Dodd Street. I'm here on behalf of the developer and just here in case you have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 15, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Ridgewood to allow automotive repair services located southeast of 186th Street and West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Bob Daly with McGrath North, 1601 Dodd Street. I'm here on behalf of the developer and just here in case you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 15, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Ridgewood to allow automotive repair services located southeast of 186th Street and West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Dan Toz over there at Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. This major amendment is, I'll be very brief. It's a adaption to a mixed-use agreement representing Discount Tire, which is a new firm in our town. In fact, they've got a new store open at 78th and Cass, and we met this morning on three new stores that are being constructed with more to come. So I'm happy to be a part of that team, happy to bring them to Omaha, and I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 16, ordinance to amend section 55740 of the Omaha Civil Code regarding interior parking lot landscape requirements. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 16, ordinance to amend section 55740 of the Omaha Civil Code regarding interior parking lot landscape requirements. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 16, ordinance to amend section 55740 of the Omaha Civil Code regarding interior parking lot landscape requirements. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 17 through 19 shall be laid over two weeks. Item number 20, resolution that preliminary platent titled Ginger Creek located southwest of 163rd and Pinkney Streets along attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road. Here on behalf of the applicant. We are just here to answer any questions, but I did want to mention we met with Public Works regarding the condition, item three, with respect to the contribution to the public infrastructure on 156th Street. We're gonna continue to work with planning and Public Works on that. I just wanted to make that statement for the record. But with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 16, resolution that the revised preliminary platent titled Ginger Creek located southwest of 163rd and Pinkney Streets along attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road. Here on behalf of the applicant. We are just here to answer any questions, but I did want to mention we met with Public Works regarding the condition, item three, with respect to the contribution to the public infrastructure on 156th Street. We're gonna continue to work with planning and Public Works on that. I just wanted to make that statement for the record. But with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 21, resolution that the revised preliminary platent titled Ginger Creek located southwest of 163rd and Pinkney Streets along attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Item number 22, resolution that preliminary platent titled South Point Estates located southeast of 211th and Pacific Streets along attached conditions is hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And you have communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Dan Walsh. I'm an attorney on behalf of the applicant. With me today are Mark Westergaard of E&amp;A Consulting Group, the engineers for the project, as well as my client, Mike Carey. Today, we're respectfully requesting your approval of the preliminary plat of South Point Estates. It's a 31-acre parcel located southeast of 211th and Pacific Streets. We're proposing to divide it into 47 lots. The property is currently owned by Grace Fellowship Church. They intend to construct a new church on the property, Lot 47 specifically. The preliminary plat received a recommendation of approval from the planning department. The planning, we, there was a layover from the February planning board to the March planning board, and during that period of time, we met with the neighbors three separate times. My client, my clients' engineers and myself met with them three times. We listened to their concerns. We developed a modified plat that reduced the number of villa lots from 10 to 9. We also created a landscape buffer and at their request agreed to install a sprinkler system. The planning board voted four to one in favor and recommended approval of the preliminary plat. We respectfully request your approval of the modified plat, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. And if there are any opponents, we'd like to reserve the balance of our time for rebuttal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
My name is Mike Jensen, 1313 Ranchview Lane. Sorry about my appearance, I had to work this morning. The developers did meet with us at my house two or three different times. First, did you guys receive the two letters that were sent out to you all? Did you have any questions on those letters that I could clarify real quick, or were they pretty self-explanatory? The land, does this turn on?
He'll turn off.
Oh.
Now, it's off. Almost. There you go.
The parcel of land that they're trying, this is the parcel of land that the church owns.
Could you, could you turn around so it's there?
Okay. The parcel of land the church owns is the gray area. This is Ranchview Estates right here. What they are doing is, let me see if I can, no, don't have this ready. There you go. What the church is doing is keeping this portion of the land, okay? And then developing this area. There's a creek that runs through here, and the villas is what we're talking about is on this side of this creek that goes to this outlot. This is Ranchview Estates right here. They're having difficulty putting the villas a different way because they want to walk out lots in these villas. Well, the plan that we had brought up to them was here's Ranchview Estates right here, and here's seven lots with one outlot. They don't want non-walkouts, which it's understandable from a developer's point of view. They also stated that they would have a hard time making the sewer work in this plan. This is the traditional plan that the homeowners were expecting to see on the other side of the fence, per se, when they purchased their land. The issue, couple issues are, with what's happening here, we have estate lots, as I stated earlier, and fairly large setbacks between the homes. So it's kind of an open area feel. Right here with these villas, with the setbacks and how it's gonna sit, you're, they're gonna be about a, give or take about a 40-foot wide villa with the setbacks in place. You know, maybe uncertain they'll be 50, 55, they're still very small widths, footprints. These lots are deeper, but they're definitely shallow. They'll also face the backyards, and they're putting a street in the backyard of Ranchview Estates. Like I stated in the letter, these people that purchased these lots never, ever, in their wildest dreams, thought that there would be a public street in their backyard. And it is in their backyard. One house in particular, from his house to the street, will probably be 85 feet because of how his house is designed on his lot. He's running late today, so he, he has his pictures, and hopefully he'll get here to show you. The, so the difficulty in making this other side work is somewhat contingent on making the SID work. Well, the bigger picture is the church keeping the land is causing the problem. Because Tom Falconi, another premier developer that developed Wingate Ranch that you guys approved today, is also touching part of Ranchview Estates. And he met with the homeowners, me specifically, gave me the plan, took it to the neighborhood, and he developed an area that works with the adjacent property. They are not upset. He's happy, they're happy. You saw no opponents in the whole time that went from the planning board to here. There was no opponents because he works with the neighborhood. It were not being unreasonable. with the R2 plan and the lots back-to-back with ease. Tom Falconi has told me so. Because that's what he wanted to do. The church would not give up the land. So by approving this, you're allowing the church to keep portion of the land, and we would be the ones that would suffer. The last portion that I wanted to bring to your attention is, we have one estate lot on there. This is the estate lot. So there's gonna be a 500-plus-foot driveway from this cul-de-sac that's gonna run right behind Ranchview Estates. This house is going to be probably placed about where I've circled here. Most likely, it will face west. So not only will this entire row have a street in their backyard, they'll also have another, I would assume, very large home facing west into their backyard. What I really measured was 575 feet to here for a driveway. So let's just say I'm off 75 feet, I'm not off 150 feet, depending on how it works. This is such an abnormal area, especially with this estate lot, how it's going, it's not a plus to the neighborhood at all. The church is the issue. You get, if he can get that whole parcel of land, he can make this work very easily with an SID and develop this side so it will work with what's already there. Did you all have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Counselor or Martin or Reverend?
Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. I'd just like to talk a little bit about what some of the comments that Mike had, and he's absolutely correct on a few of them. Certainly, the layout that was proposed by the opponents with the more conventional lots absolutely would be a more conventional way of doing things. But in this particular case, with this particular development, because of the creek that is there and because of the trees and because of the 404 permitting required, we feel that we have proposed by far the better solution in this case. The fact that with the, with the layout that was proposed by the opponents, not only is it, from a development perspective, not a very desirable alternative. As he said, the lots are flat, they face the east, they are much more expensive to develop in the other alternative. So, and there's also some 404 issues, there's some potential sewer issues, there's a lot of things wrong from a development perspective. But on, on the other hand, and more so, there's, there's some things that, that aren't good for the SID. Anytime we take lots away from the development and take valuation away, this is a small development to begin with. We've got some obligations to improve Pacific Street. It makes some of those obligations much more difficult when, when we start taking away valuation. The other thing is regardless of which development would have gone forward, there is a deal made with a very well-respected local, local builder named Whit Smith for these townhomes. They are not townhomes that are, you know, as was portrayed, a very narrow townhome that as being sort of an entry-level townhome. They are a $450,000 valuation townhome. He's built them in numerous other locations within the city of Omaha. They will be very compatible with, with the Ranchview Estates area. This is an example of one he's built in another area. Regarding that, the one lot to the south, there is an estate lot. That estate lot was proposed in either development that has been proposed, both ours and theirs. That is a unique lot that definitely will have some, it will have a longer driveway. It may be placed at a variety of locations on that site. It is intended just for that purpose, to allow that flexibility. It is probably not sewerable, and that is, we admit that that's probably the case. It will need some sort of an ejector system to pump back into the sewer system. So that was proposed in both cases, and, and that's the situation with the sewer. I put this drawing up because it shows sort of the compromise that has been arrived at so far. And you can see this outlot that is, is next to the street, which is a 50 or 55-foot wide outlot, which we have, we have an obligation to plant a lot of trees because of some mitigation out there. And we are planting about 70 or 75 of them right here. They are not small trees, they're eight to nine-foot tall evergreens along with some, some understorey growth that in about a 400-feet stretch, that many trees will provide an opaque barrier day one. Plus, there's some overstorey trees, the mature trees that are still there and so will remain in the future. So the visibility for Ranchview Estates to the west, to see anything, good, bad, or indifferent, that's going on in this subdivision is just, is just not going to be there. So we think this is the better alternative. We're confident in that, and we would ask you to support it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Stothard.
Mark, could you come back? I had just a couple of questions. The, the plan as an alternative that Mr. Jensen brought up, can you speak directly to that, the way he had the, the, the street not, not going over to the left but more straight down, that, that the neighbors said that they would be happier with? Would that work at all? Because I, you showed the wetlands area and the, and it would seem like that, that straightening out that street like they suggested might interfere with the wetland area. Could you speak to that?
You know, in, in Mike's letter, he referred to, or I guess it was in Chad Allington's letter, he referred to kind of a reference that, well, anything can work for money, and that's kind of the way this would be. Could it work with some fairly significant retaining walls? Probably. Would there be some issues with a 404 permit and getting into the waters of the US and the creek and the wetlands? Possibly. There would be extensive, pretty extensive grading costs. We think maybe about 25,000 more cubic yards of dirt, and we're, we don't have any more dirt on site, so that would have to be haul-in dirt. That's very expensive dirt.
So the cost to the developer would be great?
And to the SID, to both, yes.
Okay. When you talked about that landscape buffer that you're wanting to put in, is there a difference in the grade between where the existing homes are and where, between that and the landscape buffer and the new villas? Is there, is there a difference so that those who are in the existing homes? Yeah, that's what I wanted to see.
Yeah. This is a cross-section view at Lot 16, which is towards the north end of the subdivision. But you can see how there's a, there's a natural berm, and our, our proposed street has been set down lower. So not only is it a visual barrier with the mature evergreens that are gonna be put in, but there's, there's physically a berm or a lower elevation there where the street is at. So this gives you a good idea of the separation of the, the potential house and where that existing home is at. And I would just say one other thing, and although it's not probable, even with the proposed alternative layout, you know, they were proposing R2 zoning the rear yard, and R2 is just 25 feet. So while it's more conventional that they would put the lot up towards the front lot line, it could be, it could be, for whatever reason, moved quite a bit further back and in fact, much closer than what we're proposing in our layout, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
There's a creek that runs through here, and the villas is what we're talking about is on this side of this creek that goes to this outlot. This is Ranchview Estates right here. They're having difficulty putting the villas a different way because they want to walk out lots in these villas. Well, the plan that we had brought up to them was here's Ranchview Estates right here, and here's seven lots with one outlot. They don't want non-walkouts, which is understandable from a developer's point of view. They also stated that they would have a hard time making the sewer work in this plan. This is the traditional plan that the homeowners were expecting to see on the other side of the fence, per se, when they purchased their land. The issue, couple issues are, with what's happening here, we have estate lots, as I stated earlier, and fairly large setbacks between the homes. So it's kind of an open-area feel. Right here with these villas, with the setbacks and how it's going to sit, you're, they're going to be about a, give or take about a 40-foot-wide villa with the setbacks in place. You know, maybe uncertain, they'll be 50, 55, they're still very small widths, footprints. These lots are deeper, but they're definitely shallow. They'll also face the backyards, and they're putting a street in the backyard of Ranchview Estates. Like I stated in the letter, these people that purchased these lots never, ever, in their wildest dreams, thought that there would be a public street in their backyard. And it is in their backyard. One house in particular, from his house to the street, will probably be 85 feet because of how his house is designed on his lot. He's running late today, so he, he has his pictures, and hopefully he'll get here to show you. So the difficulty in making this other side work is somewhat contingent on making the SID work. Well, the bigger picture is, the church keeping the land is causing the problem. Because Tom Falconi, another premier developer that developed One Gate Ranch that you guys approved today, is also touching part of Ranchview Estates. And he met with the homeowners, me specifically, gave me the plan, took it to the neighborhood, and he developed an area that works with the adjacent property. They are not upset. He's happy, they're happy. You saw no opponents in the whole time that went from the planning board to here. There was no opponents because he works with the neighborhood. It were not being unreasonable if he, if Mike Carey could get that land from the church. He could make this work with the R2 plan and the lots, back-to-back, with ease. Tom Falconi has told me so. Because that's what he wanted to do. The church would not give up the land. So by approving this, you're allowing the church to keep portion of the land, and we would be the ones that would suffer. The last portion that I wanted to bring to your attention is, we have one estate lot on there. This is the estate lot. So there's going to be a 500-plus-foot driveway from this cul-de-sac that's going to run right behind Ranchview Estates. This house is going to be probably placed about where I've circled here. Most likely, it will face west. So not only will this entire row have a street in their backyard, they'll also have another, I would assume, very large home facing west into their backyard. What I really measured was 575 feet to here for a driveway. So let's just say I'm off 75 feet. I'm not off 150 feet, depending on how it works. This is such an abnormal area, especially with this estate lot, how it's going. It's not a plus for the neighborhood at all. The church is the issue. You get, if he can get that whole parcel of land, he can make this work very easily with an SID. And develop this side so it will work with what's already there. Did you all have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Counselor, or Mark, or Griffin?
Merk Westergaard with E&amp;A Concerning Group, 330 North 117th Street. I'd just like to talk a little bit about what some of the comments that Mike had, and he's absolutely correct on a few of them. Certainly, the layout that was proposed by the opponents with the more conventional lots absolutely would be a more conventional way of doing things. But in this particular case, with this particular development, because of the creek that is there, and because of the trees, and because of the 404 permitting required, we feel that we have proposed by far the better solution in this case. The fact that with the layout that was proposed by the opponents, not only is it, from a development perspective, not a very desirable alternative. As he said, the lots are flat, they face the east, they are much more expensive to develop than the other alternative. So, and there's also some 404 issues, there's some potential sewer issues, there's a lot of things wrong from a development perspective. But on the other hand, and more so, there's some things that aren't good for the SID. Anytime we take lots away from the development and take valuation away, this is a small development to begin with. We've got some obligations to improve Pacific Street. It makes some of those obligations much more difficult when we start taking away valuation. The other thing is, regardless of which development would have gone forward, there is a deal made with a very well-respected local builder named Whit Smith for these townhomes. They are not townhomes that are, you know, as was portrayed, a very narrow townhome that as being sort of an entry-level townhome. They are a $450,000 valuation townhome. He's built them in numerous other locations within the city of Omaha. They will be very compatible with the Ranchview Estates area. This is an example of one he's built in another area. Regarding that, the one lot to the south, there is an estate lot. That estate lot was proposed in either development that has been proposed, both ours and theirs. That is a unique lot that definitely will have some, it will have a longer driveway. It may be placed at a variety of locations on that site. It is intended just for that purpose, to allow that flexibility. It is probably not sewerable, and that is, we admit that that's probably the case. It will need some sort of ejector system to pump back into the sewer system. So that was proposed in both cases, and that's the situation with the sewer. I put this drawing up because it shows sort of the compromise that has been arrived at so far. And you can see this outlot that is next to the street, which is a 50 or 55-foot-wide outlot, which we have, we have an obligation to plant a lot of trees because of some mitigation out there. And we are planting about 70 or 75 of them right here. They are not small trees, they're eight-to-nine-foot-tall evergreens, along with some understory growth that, in about a 400-feet stretch, that many trees will provide an opaque barrier day one. Plus, there's some overstorey trees, the mature trees that are still there, and so will remain in the future. So the visibility for Ranchview Estates to the west is to see anything, good, bad, or indifferent, that's going on in this subdivision is just, is just not going to be there. So we think this is the better alternative. We're confident in that, and we would ask you to support it also. Thank you.
Do you need a motion? Oh, Ms. Stothard.
Mark, could you come back? I had just a couple of questions. The planned, as an alternative that Mr. Jensen brought up, can you speak directly to that, the way he had the street not going over to the left, but more straight down, that the neighbors said that they would be happier with? Would that work at all? Because I, you showed the wetlands area, and it would seem like that straightening out that street like they suggested might interfere with the wetland area. Could you speak to that?
You know, in Mike's letter, he referred to, or I guess it was in Chad Allington's letter, he referred to, kind of a reference that, well, anything can work for money, and that's kind of the way this would be. Could it work with some fairly significant retaining walls? Probably. Would there be some issues with a 404 permit and getting into the waters of the US and the creek and the wetlands? Possibly. There would be extensive, pretty extensive grading costs. We think maybe about 25,000 more cubic yards of dirt, and we're, we don't have any more dirt on site, so that would have to be haul-in dirt. That's very expensive dirt.
So the cost to the developer would be great?
And to the SID, to both, yes.
Okay. When you talked about that landscape buffer that you're wanting to put in, is there a difference in the grade between where the existing homes are and where, between that and the landscape buffer and the new villas? Is there a difference so that those who are in the existing homes? Yeah, that's what I wanted to see.
This is a cross-section view at Lot 16, which is towards the north end of the subdivision. But you can see how there's a natural berm, and our proposed street has been set down lower. So not only is it a visual barrier with the mature evergreens that are going to be put in, but there's physically a berm or a lower elevation there where the street is at. So this gives you a good idea of the separation of the potential house and where that existing home is at. And I would just say one other thing, and although it's not probable, even with the proposed alternative layout, you know, they were proposing R2 zoning the rear yard, and R2 is just 25 feet. So while it's more conventional that they would put the lot up towards the front lot line, it could be, it could be, for whatever reason, moved quite a bit further back, and in fact, much closer than what we're proposing in our layout, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Special use permit, item number 23, resolution, special use permit, application submitted by Douglas County School District for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in a development reserve district located at 2110 O Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Scott Dye, 1500 Woodman Tower, here on behalf of the owner. I'm here to answer any questions the council might have concerning this project.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Item number 24, resolution, special use permit, application submitted by AMD Auto Plaza for a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a community commercial district located at 5825 North 90th Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Trajan Surjuzovic. I'm representing AMD Auto Plaza, 5825 North 90th Street. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 25 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, we'll take items 26 and 27 together. Love will tear 569 North 155th Plaza, Class I liquor license, no application, oh location. And 27 is a package license at the same location. It's an annexation.
Public...
Yes. Before we get going on this in the public hearing, we need to advise the applicant that you can, if you wish, request an amendment to a Class C, which would be one license rather than two, which would save you about $400 a month, or year.
I did this at the beginning, the Class I, because it was working with my lease. But I might do that, is that, do I need to decide now, or?
Well, if you do, you can do it later. Do it anytime you want.
Okay.
But it's going to cost you an extra $400 to do it at that time.
Yeah, I may as well, I may as well save some money.
I'd save your money now if you're going to do it.
Okay.
But we're going to have a public hearing first. We need to have a public hearing first, I think.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 26 and 27 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Sarah Kitchman. I'm the owner of the restaurant, and we've just been annexed, so we've been open for 12 years, and now we're part of Omaha City.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And would you like to amend to a C?
Yes, please do.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
It's on the amendment. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
7 to 0. Item number 28, North Omaha Love Jazz Cultural Art and Humanities DBA Love Jazz Center, 2506 2510 North 24th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 28 begins now. Are there any proponents?
He's sitting right there.
Time limit's up.
Taking too long.
Taking too long.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Clark. I'm the executive director of the Love Jazz and Arts Center, 2510 North 24th Street. I just wanted to leave these items for all the members of the council and be here to, along with, we have two board members here, Arvin and Ernest, Ernest White, our board chair for the Love Jazz and Arts Center, so if you have any questions as it relates to the liquor license.
Thank you, Tim. If you want to just give the material to the clerk here.
Okay.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things I wanted to say here. First of all, executive director of the Love Jazz Museum, Mr. Tim Clark, is being inducted into the Benson High School Hall of Fame this coming Friday at 7:30. I have purchased my dozen eggs for the occasion, and I did plan to be there and celebrate appropriately. Secondly, let me say in all seriousness, I'd like to thank Tim and the members of the board for the tremendous work in bringing the Love Jazz and Blue, the Love Jazz and Arts Center kind of back from the, close to the grave, so to speak. We had a lot of work to do, a lot of challenging times, and I'm appreciative of the fact that you all stepped up to the plate and got it done. So I want to thank you, you know, personally, for your efforts at the Love Jazz and Arts Center. And I will have my dozen eggs in tow on Friday. Thank you. Most approved.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I was just going to make those very same comments myself. We do appreciate all the work Tim does and the board does with the Love Museum, and what a great asset that is to the city. And because Benson High School isn't my district, I wanted to recognize him too, and embarrass him a little bit for being a distinctive bunny. We had an extensive conversation...
Excuse me, that's a mighty bunny.
We had an extensive conversation before the meeting about how it's possible that came about, but we congratulate him, and I'm sure it's well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the connection, bunny's egg. I don't think Pete has any eggs, though. I think that's... Mr. Thompson.
Back when Tim went to the school, the bunnies didn't have that steroid look that it has now. It was a little fluffy, little furry animal. And the Trojans used to trounce the Benson bunnies. No, in all seriousness, in honor of a song that Preston Love used to play, "One Mint Julep" was the cause of it all. I'm going to support this because I know that Preston would want to see this happen.
We have a motion on second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
I am reading my saxophone.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on a consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed, as otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 29 through 33 were held on April the 16th, 2013. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed 7 to 0.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 34 through 44 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed a second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's laid over two weeks, 601 passes. Item number 47, a special ordinance lowering special tax for constructing sidewalks, SWR 2012-01, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 was held on April the 16th, 2013. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Roll call. Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed as amended 7 to 0. Item 47, as Douglas County Election Commissioner, transmit certification of official results of the April 2, 2013 City of Omaha primary election. We need a motion to...
We're most pleased to place on file. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Placed on file, 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item 48 shall be held on third reading. Item number 49, ordinance approving a contract with Alkali Answering Service or Telephone Answering Service for the Street Maintenance Division.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 50, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize the distribution of the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Wells Fargo Environmental Solutions for Communities 2012 Grant Award to fund environmental improvements to the Levi Carter Park Pavilion.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 51, ordinance to waive the provisions of OMS code 15-2 prohibiting the sale of alcoholic liquor other than beer before 12 noon on Sunday to authorize the sale of distilled spirits commencing at 8:00 a.m. at the Omaha Country Club on Sunday, July 14, 2013.
Public hearing on agenda item number 51 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 52, ordinance to establish a new Class B Farm Bullock Storage District, B 179 at 5800 North 72nd Street for WOWT Gray Television Group.
Public hearing on agenda item number 52 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett. That's it.
Quick on the gun.
That's it, okay.
Do you want me to read the pursuant rule first? Pursuant to State Council Rule 70, agenda, public hearing on agenda item number 53 through 57 shall be held on second reading.
Mr. President? Mr. Gurnett? Make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations?
Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Pass.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
No.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Fails on 1 to 6 vote.
Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Were adjourned.
No, thanks. Okay.